Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 26th meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. This evening on our agenda will be a continuation of the public hearing for 2024 Comprehensive Plan. Before we go into that, first things first, Ms. Deveraux, please call role.
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Ellen Talbot.
Present.
Philip Lindholm is excused. Mark Ehre.
Present.
Lynn Larson is absent. Philip Colmes.
Present.
And Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. You all have received copies of our minutes, June 6 minutes. I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Then it's been moved by Mr. Herr, second by Ms. Talbot. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Passed. Ms. Spear, any agenda updates today?
No, Mr. Chair.
So now we're at the portion of the meeting where we will have a public comments. And I haven't received a sheet, so we have no. So while she's getting that, remember during this public comment session that this is not a discussion. Commissioners do not engage in conversation, but they do take your comments seriously and under advisement. We ask that your comments be courteous, respectful, and be related to planning commission matters and be limited to three minutes. Now, if you're here to make comments regarding the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, and you want your comments to be on record, I recommend that you wait until the public hearing portion of this meeting, so it is on record. Review. But no public comments, just.
Mr. Chair, there are people online, but I'm not sure if they're here for the public hearing or for public comment. So if there's anyone online who wishes to speak during public comment on a general topic, not the public hearing for the 2024 Comp Plan Amendment, please raise your hand now. And we have, oop. Looks like no one is indicating wishing to speak under public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we'll, we'll close that portion of the meeting and we'll now open our public hearing portion. And again, that pertains to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Review. And first I'll call Ms. Spear for comments, please.
Thank you, and I will run through an introductory presentation here for the benefit of the public record, as well as those who are watching online and are here in person tonight. So this is a public hearing on the decennial. Every 10 year Planning Commission review for the Lakewood's Comprehensive Plan, as well as related development regulations. And then there are several other optional elements that are being reviewed as part of this package for Lakewood specifically this year. We're required to do this, as I mentioned, every 10 years. It has to be completed under the Growth Management Act by the end of 2024. And then five years from now will be the start of an implementation progress report schedule, which will be every five years, so you'll have the periodic update and then five years later, a report. Five years later comes the next decennial report. And just for information, the reason for those reports now is to focus on whether the housing elements and its regulations are realizing housing on the ground, how things are going with permit processing timelines, and whether the city is moving forward with the actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. In 2022 is when the city actually started its work to promote and prepare for the 10 year review that we're now hearing public comment on tonight. There are two city websites that have been in place since fall of 22. There have been numerous social media messaging coming out from the city, two Connections Magazine articles. And then there's also an electronic newsletter that goes out roughly every month, where we've had over 10 issues of that so far. There's about 150 people that are on that distribution list by choice. There have been four direct mailings and then one mailing for specifically, excuse me, for citywide direct mailings, and then one specifically to shoreline property owners and parcel taxpayers. There was a citizen committee formed in 2023 that looked and provided recommendations on the housing element and the energy and climate change element. And then there were two other committees that served from 23 into 2024. One was for the overall update to the Steering Committee, and the other was related specifically to the Tellicum Woodbrook SubArea Plan update. We've had five open houses at different times of day in different locations throughout the city, starting last May, and working through this May, actually. And then there've been in front of you as a planning commission, over 20 meetings, and there's been over 10 city council meetings where various topics have been focused on again since 2022. All of this information is available for public access on the website, cityoflakewood.us/24periodicreview. So the scope of the 24 review, there are required things that need to be reviewed from front to back in our Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations related to the policies in that plan. They are required under the Growth Management Act. They are required per multi-county planning policies that are from our regional body that provides regulatory authority for Pierce, Kitsap, King, and Snohomish Counties. And then there's also Pierce County countywide planning policies that city needs to be consistent with in its planning. There are also optional elements that the city has chosen to adopt over the last five years, with the exception of Tellicum Neighborhood Plan, which was adopted in 2011. We have an energy and climate change element that was adopted in 2022. We have the Station District SubArea from 2021, and we have the Downtown SubArea Plan that was adopted in 2018. In addition to required and optional reviews, the city is also looking at, and in some cases asking, not necessarily for specific language in the package to go to council, but recommendations from you, the Planning Commission, regarding parking policies and regulations, particularly in residential areas, whether to replace or update the downtown subareas transportation mitigation fee program. And then the third is something that came up in 23, the council has asked that it come back to you in 24 regarding short-term rental regulations, particularly whether short-term rentals should be allowed in accessory dwelling units. So the content of the package includes a completely reorganized and in many cases rewritten Comprehensive Plan. There's new goals, there's new policies, there's new elements. And then there's additional background documents and appendices that will come along with it. There is a new 2024 Tellicum Woodbrook SubArea Plan, which is replacing the neighborhood plan that was adopted in 2011. There are some changes to the boundary for the downtown subarea. And for those of you that were on the commission last year, this is because there were a number of parcels rezoned to Central Business District last year. And that is a zone that's exclusive to the downtown subarea, so the boundary is changing to reflect that. There's also some changes to the Station District SubArea Plan because the anticipated Lakewood Landing Development, which was moving forward with a lot of momentum when that plan, subarea plan was adopted, will not be happening because of purchases of parts of where it was going to be located. So removing that from the subarea plan. And then there's one zone change for a parcel that the city already owns, but it needs to be rezoned in order to be included in Ward's Lake Park, so you'll see a little bit about that in the package. In terms of regulations, there are significant changes to the city's Critical Areas Ordinance, which is located in Title 14. It's related to updating the regulations to comply with best available science, and also has some changes for buffers for the various stream types that you see listed there, which I'll explain in a little more detail shortly. We are incorporating in this package the city's existing shoreline master program into the municipal code. Right now, it's its own standalone document, so we're bringing it into code for ease of reference. There is a new chapter regarding unit lot subdivision, and this is related to some of what we'll be talking about and have talked about, housing densification. Where now there is, I don't want to call it a shortcut, but there's a streamlined process to subdivide residential lots in order to allow either middle housing or accessory dwelling units on their own parcel. So that's now included as part of this package. There's other required and related regulation amendments in the citywide, and then the two subarea titles, 18A, B, or C. Again, there's those short-term rental regulations that were first reviewed by you in 23, and they're back in front of you in 24. And then there's changes regarding public noticing. This was a bill that was passed actually by the legislature this year, requiring some specific language be added to our code. There were two things I mentioned at the start that the city council is also asking for feedback from you on, and that is related to parking policy and regulation within residential areas in particular, given the densification that's going to happen over time with middle housing and ADUs coming into areas that were historically single-family only. And then again, whether, given the discussion that's been had recently about how the transportation mitigation fee program has performed since 2018, whether it should continue unchanged or whether changes should happen. Process, we are pretty much in the middle of this graphic, but the background work, the preparation of documents, the public outreach has happened. We are now in the middle of public hearings in front of you, the Planning Commission. The SEPA determination, that is actually going on right now. There's also during the month of June, the SEPA Draft Environmental Impact Statement is open for public comment. Those comments are due by July 3rd. And then we also are going to be looking to, once the Planning Commission takes its action, all of this package is going to go to the city council. They will take their time through study sessions and public hearings before they take action at this point in mid-September. The other piece to the 10-year review, though, is that Puget Sound Regional Council and the Department of Commerce will both be reviewing either sections of or all of the plan in order to verify that they are consistent with either those regional multi-county planning policies, regional growth strategy, and/or state statute. So one more time with dates specifically, we're here tonight on June 26th. At this point, the Planning Commission is scheduled to take action on July 10th, but that is subject to your prerogative, if you feel you need more time. Council at this point would start on July 22nd. Their public hearing is scheduled for August 19th. And then action at this point for the council is scheduled for September 16th of this year. The way the council's process generally happens is that ordinances are adopted and in effect 30 days after they are passed. What the city department is going to say, though, is recommend a start date of January 1st of 2025 for the new Comprehensive Plan, as well as all of the regulations related in order for the internal preparation, the public noticing for the new rules that will be in effect on property throughout the city. So before I move on into more specific topics, any questions on any of that so far?
Mr. Larson?
Mr. Chairman, I wonder with regard to the requirements for parking in the, because of the new ADUs that can be added. I wonder if it's even necessary to do something about creating parking solutions before we know what the problems are that are created. A lot of them could be solved neighbor to neighbor. And I wonder if we're better off just delaying action on that till we see the set of problems that arise, and then we can create a solution for the actual problems instead of anticipating creating this wide myriad of, wide myriad, that's that's not the right thing, this myriad of of different situations, given different neighborhoods and streets and neighborhoods and house sizes and all the things that enter into it. Just thought I'd pose that question.
That's something we can hold on to and discuss at the, at the end. Appreciate that, Mr. Larson. Have questions? Okay, Ms. Spear.
All right, then, turning to what is the focus of tonight's public outreach that we conducted over the last few weeks. This is related to both our shoreline master program as it stands, and then some proposed changes to our Critical Areas Ordinance or Environmental Protection, is what the name of the title is, 14 in our municipal code. Right now, our shoreline master program regulates what are called shorelines of the state, which include, quote, shorelines, shorelines of statewide significance, and then critical areas within the shorelines of the state. So what this graphic is attempting to show is that we have shorelines, which are identified as Gravelly, Lake Louise, Silicon Lake, Wahop Lake, Chambers Creek, and then the shorelands within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark for each of those water bodies. And then again, the critical areas within those shorelines. And then there's also shorelines of statewide significance, which have a different category in the shoreline master program because of that status. American Lake because it's over 1,000 acres. Clover Creek because it has a flow that is higher than 1,000 cubic feet per second mean annual flow. And then again, we have shorelines within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark and critical areas within those. So as it stands right now, all of these different water bodies are governed under our shoreline master program. What has happened in some cases since the last time the shoreline, excuse me, the Critical Areas Ordinance was last reviewed, is there have been some changes regarding no net loss of ecological function language in state law. There's been some changes regarding best available science that is available and should be used as the basis for critical area regulation. And it is required by the Growth Management Act and the Shoreline Management Act that the city make sure its regulations and zoning, et cetera, all comply. So there are specific state laws that say, "City of Lakewood, you need to make changes because after a review of what our current plan and our current critical ordinary ordinance reads like, there needs to be some changes in order to follow state law." So in 2015, that was the last time the Critical Areas Ordinance was updated. In 2019 was when the shoreline master program was adopted. In 2020, the Department of Fish and Wildlife came out with new guidance, which is not the same as a legal requirement or a state statute, that focused on riparian areas. They changed the name or reference of buffers to riparian management zones. And so there's a difference now in the way that agency is discussing and talking about its recommendations to local government on governing these things. The reason we're talking about both our Critical Areas Ordinance and the shoreline master program is because right now Lakewood's two documents are interrelated. They are, in some jurisdictions, completely separate, but in Lakewood, they do kind of cross-reference each other. As it stands, the Critical Areas Ordinance says, "We're going to use the buffer widths identified in the shoreline master program for river and stream habitat protection buffers." And then it also identifies the lakes that are regulated under the shoreline master program. Because we have to follow state law and make changes to the Critical Areas Ordinance regardless in order to follow best available science, that is going to in turn, not recommend, that's the wrong word, but it's now causing the city to think we need to make some changes to our shoreline master program as well. And that would actually be coming to you as a separate package, but it will be happening this year. The Critical Areas Ordinance is in front of you now. The shoreline master program update that we are going to be initiating here locally is a separate track, which will happen later this fall. So this map hopefully is clear for folks online and here in the room, but this is our map from our shoreline master program. And color-coded are the various different types of shoreline that that program or plan identifies. You've got conservancy, which is Chambers Creek. You've got natural across the top there of Chambers Creek, right where Lakewood and University Place meet. This sort of olive green around Lake Silicon, Gravelly Lake, American Lake, and Lake Louise is called shoreline residential. The lighter green about around Wahop Lake is called urban park. And then you see the purple that takes Clover Creek down past I-5 and further southeast. So all of these have their own shoreline buffer widths. And then there's also a setback that applies to lakes. Excuse me, I got that backwards. There's a setback for the lakes, and there's a buffer that applies to streams, and then there's additional setback for streams based on what you see here below. So for shoreline residential, this is the current rule. It has been since 2019, and prior to that, we had a 2014 shoreline management program that had pretty much the same information. American Lake, Gravelly Lake, Lake Louise, and Silicon Lake all have a 65-foot setback or buffer. Because these are all lakes, it's going to be called a setback. Clover Creek is an urban stream. It's at a level of 65 feet, but because it's a creek, there's additional eight foot included as well. Urban Park, which is again Wahop Lake, and then there's little pieces of Gravelly Lake, Lake Silicon, and American Lake of that lighter green. That is where you see 100 foot currently. And then the conservancy and natural up here in Chambers Creek is at 150 foot and then an additional eight foot building setback on each one of those water bodies. So again, this is the status quo. This is what's been in place for at least a decade, if not longer. Couple of, just quick reference here and hopefully a graphic that helps a little bit. Riparian is just referring to on or pertaining to the banks of a river, stream, or lake. The riparian management zone is basically what you see here on the graphic below. The area adjacent to rivers and streams that has potential to provide full function of the riparian area based on the site potential tree height, and I'll go through that conceptual framework. The buffer, we've used that term in land use for a long time. People have heard that before, if they're a property owner along a lake or river or creek. But it's the area adjacent to the shoreline or critical area that separates and protects the area. So in past, this is now being called a riparian management zone here, this would have been the buffer. A setback is required open space beyond the buffer or riparian management zone. So in this graphic, it's the space here between what you see as vegetation and then the building. That's an additional, basically, no build area. Another way to look at this, if you had a structure and then the, because of the code, it, there was 100-foot setback and a 50-foot riparian management zone. You have your riparian area here. It might be a lake, it might be a creek. You have maybe some associated wetlands as well. You have a management zone, which might at one point have been called a buffer to you, but riparian management zone now of 50 feet. And here again, you really don't have anything other than vegetation to protect the riparian area. Then you have this additional, because in this case, it would be another 50 feet. We have 100-foot total. This setback, there's, there's not the same requirement for this denser vegetation necessarily, but it's a no build. And then you have the area where the structure on a parcel is actually located. When I mentioned a few slides ago, site potential tree height, this is something that the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife now includes as part of its recommendations, is to base a buffer width on a site potential tree height, and that 200 there at the bottom means the height of the tallest dominant tree after 200 years. So for Pierce County and for Lakewood, the Doug fir is the dominant tree species, and the basic range there, you see about a 70-foot difference, but 165 to 235-foot height, which translates into that same width on the ground for a buffer or a riparian management zone. Red alder, shorter one, Western hemlock, somewhere in the middle. But the idea here is just to explain what the site potential tree height is, because this is now a tool that the Department of Fish and Wildlife recommends using in order to set your new riparian management zone distances or your buffers and setbacks. I will say once again, this is a recommendation. This is not state law. This is something that the agency is suggesting and providing guidance to, and when you see comments from them on proposed changes to critical area regulation, this is where they bring this information in and say this is best practice. The same distances that I mentioned were also included in the gap analysis for the city, excuse me, for Pierce County in 2023. Lakewood, once again, current regulations for the river and stream buffers have not been updated since 2015. 2020, we have this shift from the stream buffer to riparian management zone, so that change in terminology and and mindset needs to be reflected in our best available science. So what are we talking about now? Why have we notified the public and asked them to come here and provide their feedback and learn and and give reaction to you and then to the city council, should they wish? What is being suggested as part of this process for our 2024 periodic update is that there will be a new version of our Critical Areas Ordinance, and it is now going to specifically regulate certain water bodies. On the other hand, we are going to continue to have water bodies that continue to be governed under the current shoreline master program, and their buffers are not going to change. So I'll say it here and then I'll show it graphically in just a second, but the area where there's not any change under the shoreline master program would be for American Lake, Gravelly Lake, Lake Louise, Silicon Lake, Wahop Lake, Chambers Creek, Clover Creek, and then those shorelands, shorelands and critical areas. So all of these water bodies are still governed under our shoreline master program, which at this point is not being changed with this packet. It is just simply saying, these are the water bodies that will be, continue to be regulated under that document. Over on the other side of this graph, or this graphic, you'll see under our new Title 14, our new Critical Areas Ordinance, that's part of the package, there are water bodies that would now be governed in a different way. And they are Boils Lake, Carp Lake, Emerson Lake, Lost Lake, Flett Creek, Ponstaleon Creek. Then there's a number of unnamed tributaries that come into Gravelly Lake, Lost Lake, Wahop Lake, Chambers and Clover Creek. And then there's also some unnamed water bodies. And then again, the, the critical areas within all of these riparian management zones. So one more time, if you are a property owner or a resident around any of these water bodies that are listed on the left, there is no change. If you are, however, a property owner, a resident around these water bodies over here, some of which don't even have names at this point, there is going to be a change to how they are regulated in the distance of buffers. The other thing I would like to say before going any further is, does this mean you have to do anything right now without coming and pulling a permit at the city? No. Status quo, until you come in for redevelopment, until you come in for some type of improvement on the property, that is when these new rules are going to go into effect. So this map here on the left is also out here in hard copy in the back, for those of you that are here in person. But this is the, the map that shows these different water bodies. And you'll see down here a summary of the new buffer widths that would apply to the various types of color-coded water bodies. So again, shorelines of the state or type S as in SAM. Those are those dark blue, the Chambers Creek, Silicon Lake, Gravelly Lake, Clover Creek, American Lake Louise, and Wahop are still going to follow the same buffers that were in the shoreline master program. The red water bodies that you see here on this map are considered type F as in frank, and that F stands for fish bearing. And this is where the biggest change is in the new code. Right now, some of these are not identified at all in the shoreline master program. And some of them, at this point, have no resulting buffer that's set. However, what's being set now is this 200-foot under the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife's recommendation. So the packet in front of you this evening and out to the public for the last three public hearings has shown a 200-foot buffer around the type F water bodies. What does that mean? Additional review, restriction potentially on what is, a property owner may want to do. Additional review, restriction potentially on what is a property owner may want to do? And it is really, does not leave a lot of discretion to the city. The rules follow best available science, and there's really no give other than what's been included in the code right now as called a deviance or a variance. And those are described on the handout that was put out for everyone to pick up tonight, and I'll talk about in a few moments. The orange, which is kind of hard to see on the actual map, but these are NP or NS waters, meaning non-fish-bearing, either perennial, meaning they're around all the time, or a non-fish-bearing seasonal water body. And those buffers are being set at 100 feet. This refers to Wahop Lake, Lost Lake, I'm sorry, tributaries to them, excuse me, tributaries for Wahop Lake, Lost Lake, Gravely Lake, Chambers and Clover Creek. And then there's some unnamed water bodies as well. And so for instance, hopefully you can see it, but if not, it's the orange that you might see online or in hard copy beyond Clover Creek here in the south in Springbrook. There's a section of a tributary coming off of Gravely Lake. There's a very small spot right at the north end of Lost Lake. There's a tributary over here on the west side of the city coming in or out of Wahop Lake. Those are all the type N water bodies with the 100-foot. The last categorization is type X, meaning there is no categorization of it right now. And so these are the pink water bodies that you see on the map. Crawford Marsh, Owens Marsh, and then there's not even a name up here right on the northern boundary. But those are being treated the same as the type N water bodies. So they are also at 100-foot buffer. So again, these are what are being recommended in the draft that's in your packet for tonight. And this is based on recommendations coming from Fish and Wildlife as well as best available What we are suggesting and recommending as a city is that while we are unable to make changes to the type N or type X buffer widths, because they are grounded in best available science, we are suggesting and recommending that this 200-foot actually be reduced to 150 feet. There are reasons why. First of all, the, the requirement by a city is no net loss of ecological function. And in the background reports that have been provided over the last year to the city of Lakewood as well as Pierce County, there's been discussion about 150 feet rather than 200 achieves that. It is, does follow best available science, that 150-foot width. And it also is reflecting the 2010 shoreline report and critical area current condition analysis that was done. So looking at what is on the ground now and going forward, this would protect the, the functions and values and, and is justifiable under state law. So the only thing that we are able to do, but we are proposing to do, is to reduce the buffer for the type F water bodies, Boils Lake, Lost Lake, Carp Lake, Emerson Lake, Flett Creek, Ponce de Leon Creek, and the unnamed type F or color red water bodies. Reduce those buffers from 200 feet to 150 feet. That may reduce the need to actually be looking at adjacent parcels, for instance. As you can see, Carp Lake, Lost Lake, Boils Lake, they're all right in the middle of built-out areas. There are homes and perhaps businesses located on these parcels. And so when you start to talk about having to look at 200 feet away, that could be one or even two lots. That could be a considerable additional burden that property owners would have to deal with. Ponce de Leon is at least partially underground, but for the area, that's not. This is also something that's very heavily built out. It's right next to downtown, or if you want to call it part of the subarea, I think at least some of it is. So what we're suggesting and what we will have a full background report in front of the city council will, will work to say and recommend that 150 feet rather than 200 for the type F water bodies is where the city should go. So the other thing, actually, let me just say this one more time. This is what's been provided for, for people on the handout that was in hard copy for tonight. It's also going to be available online as of tomorrow morning, but this tries to summarize all of these various options. And really, the change for the type F, type N, and type X shoreline or water bodies, excuse me, is moving out of the shoreline master program. All of these will be now regulated under the critical areas ordinance. The distances for here, if you'll look at type N and type X, they are the same for both the option that's in the current packet as well as what the city's recommending. The only difference that the city is able to recommend is on type F, and that is that reduction I was just talking about from 200 to 150 feet. Type S, one more time, those are the ones that are considered shoreline of the state. They will still be governed under the shoreline master program. And as a result, there is no change proposed for all of those water bodies. They will continue to have the same setbacks and buffers. There's one section, though, I wanted to raise the awareness of. When there is a quote interrupted buffer, meaning for instance, if there is an established public or private road, that may affect the distance of a buffer because that would interrupt the buffer anyway. So there may be some review and, and looking at the distance of the buffer if there is one that's interrupted that way. And then there's also the option in the proposed code for an applicant to do their own site evaluation and make sure it's available, excuse me, it is consistent, sorry, with best available science based on that 200-year site potential tree height I mentioned before. If you don't want to use what's in the table already, oops, where did it go? There we go. This is the table that it's referring to, so the, either the 150 or the 100-foot distance. So if you are a property owner and want to try for a different distance of a buffer, that would be the process that you have at your disposal. Again, there's going to be a buffer background report provided to us. We have somebody under contract to do that. We just don't have it for you this evening, unfortunately, but it will be in front of the city council before they take action later this year. As I mentioned at the start as well, we are going to do a locally initiated shoreline master program update this year, very strictly limited to making the shoreline master program reflect what's being done under the critical areas ordinance, which is taking those water bodies out. Those will be now regulated under the CAO or Title 14. The remaining water bodies that continue to be under the SMP will remain there. And then we will also have a smaller set of regulations that will probably get in front of council before the end of the year, that will be just doing a little bit more cleanup of the critical area regulations. So two more things that will be coming to planning commission in the near future. Two other things that I wanted to make sure was also taken into account in tonight's public hearing is that there is a new chapter in front of you that's new to tonight's package, title 17, chapter 17.24. This is related to the ability of property owners to subdivide lots in order to allow multiple units on what was a single-family residential lots. This is something that's required by state law, and so the language reflects that in the proposed regulatory chapter. And then the last one is that the city has purchased this parcel here that's got the hatch marks and the red star, needing to rezone that, so it is able to get pulled into what is green already, Ward's Lake Park. So this would expand Ward Lake Park by all of that geography as well. So once more, everything that I've gone through, everything that will be happening between now and final action will be at this website, cityoflakewood.us/24periodicreview/. And that is it from me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. We'd now like to hear from those who have signed up to speak during this public hearing portion of our meeting. I'm sure we have some individuals online also, but we went online last time, virtual last time first. Let's do in-person first also. Same comments as before, we don't discuss, but we do take your comments seriously. And we ask that you be courteous, respectful, and limit your time to three, to three minutes. First on the list here is Kim Underwood. Please, can you come up? State your name, city of residence, and if I have mispronounced your name, please correct
Hello, my name is Kim Underwood. I've lived in Lakewood for 45 years now. Esteemed members of the Planning Commission, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council to reiterate concerns outlined in our letter to the Commission dated June 10th. Under the Federal Clean Water Act, waters of the United States encompass any surface, hydrological, biological, physical, and chemical nexus connected to navigable waters. Consequently, adherence to the regulations stipulated by the State Shoreline Management Act and the shoreline master program are paramount. Therefore, the Executive Committee has followed, had these following recommendations. Amend the buffers in the critical ordinance to ensure expanded buffer widths encompassing areas subject to land use changes or proposed new developments, including accessory dwelling units. Utilize the city's communication tools to disseminate essential information on the proper maintenance of riparian areas, thereby enhancing water quality and habitat conditions. Promote the planting of trees as they offer significant benefits of overall health of our watershed. These benefits include embankment stabilization and the reduction of water temperatures, which in turn help to mitigate algal bloom. Allocate resources towards a robust enforcement program. The addition of illicit discharge, detention personnel in critical areas enforced staff will deter further environmental degradation. So now I'm going to step back from the Watershed Council and comment as a resident. The Chambers Clover Creek watershed is a mere 432 square miles. Understanding how the region functions hydrologically is important when qualifying, quantifying the water supply to meet the needs of our region. Until the city council, planning commissioners, and staff fully grasp the correlation, groundwater withdrawals, groundwater recharge, sustainable surface water flow, we will remain trapped in the downward spiral of deteriorating water quality and diminishing water quantity. I'd like to make one comment on the expansion of the subarea. I oppose it because I think we should take a lesson from University Place. They put up 500 apartments when they took down the theater on, I believe it's Mildred. I went to a council meeting in Pierce County the other day and heard that after putting up the apartments, they found out that they do not have the infrastructure to support it. So please do your homework. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Ms. Ramuson, is that correct? No? Find up and left, okay. How about, and please, I, first name E-H-L-E-R-S, and the last name is J-C-A-N-N-E? Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, please come forward, ma'am. And please state your name and city of residence, please, again.
My name is Jeanne Ellers, and I live in Lakewood, Washington. Thank you so much for allowing me to come forth again. I just wanted to take this opportunity to encourage your thinking about existing cul-de-sac-type communities within the city of Lakewood. Density in an area where people have laid out their plans for retirement and their, their little wealth, their little pocket of wealth they're hoping to accomplish with their home when they're time to, when it's time to sell it. I just can't imagine changing these cul-de-sacs into areas that you're increasing the density, and if not that, then we're changing homes into a different type of living environment. In other words, we've gotten rid of the single-family residency since we'll have the new style of housing and, and supporting groups of people in, in our, in our neighborhoods now, in our especially cul-de-sacs somehow. To me, because I'm in a cul-de-sac, that seems different. We don't really care to have density. I think my plea is for you to consider what is happening in a cul-de-sac from parking to the, the value of the land, how it's going to decrease, how the, I, I think, you know, it's the, the content and happiness that each individual homeowner, but what we have because we're comfortable with the way things are. And I don't think any of us are pretending to be rich. It's just that to change that without clearly having us vote on it, I, I would hope that you would reconsider that. And that, that's the purpose of my comment. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. That's all I have signed up physically. So let's go to the virtual.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first person who had their hand raised was Christina Minetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, Ms. Minetti, go ahead, please.
Oh, good, good evening. My name is Christina Minetti. I'm from the Gary Oak Coalition in Lakewood. That's an environmental nonprofit. We have several concerns, please take them into account. Despite all the talk in recent years about improving protections for Gary Oaks in Lakewood, the current proposed amendments do nothing to improve the situation and in fact, make it in some ways worse. The main problem is that the city of Lakewood is bound by the GMA to ensure no net loss of critical areas, that yet the city is failing to do this. In terms of the Gary Oaks or Oregon White Oaks, the city does not classify many of our Gary Oaks as critical areas, even though it should. WDFW's 1998 and 2024 guidelines, which are the best available science, as well as habitat biologist Darren Masters, say that single oaks such as those found in urban and urbanizing contexts like Lakewood can qualify. Mr. Masters has said that oaks like those on Hipkins affected by the New Roundabout were certainly worthy of protection. WDFW should be treated not just as a recommendation, as Ms. Spear mentioned, but as a mandate, even though it is only a recommendation. The city needs an inventory of all Gary Oaks on both public and private properties so that it knows what its critical, critical areas are that are comprised of Gary Oaks. The city must be more proactive in exacting its protection of Gary Oaks. Despite some official talk of protections for Gary Oaks, the city does not even prohibit invasive species from covering trees banned in other municipalities. Ivy and other invasive vines kill oaks, causing loss in, in critical areas. The city's regulations require that during construction, the oaks are protected, yet repeatedly we see that they are not. The city must insist that developers, businesses, and property owners treat their Gary Oaks and other trees in such a way that they are not harmed but can thrive. This means that if a developer such as Mr. Remer on Gravely Lake Drive preserves Gary Oaks during developing his apartment complex, he may not pave with asphalt up to their trunks. This is a sure way to make those Gary Oaks suffer and die because their roots will be heated and dried, they will be cooked, and they will not have enough water. In such a long-lived species, such damage can take decades to become apparent. Businesses would be made to remove, should be made to remove pavement around oaks and improve their conditions, not turn a blind eye when a large oak is cut down for an extra parking space, as happened at the Old Colonial Center a few years ago near the Auto Zone. The city must stop allowing utilities to mutilate and kill Gary Oaks. They are not subject to any tree preservation regulations. The city too must stop allowing itself to mutilate and destroy Gary Oaks on public property and in its own right of way. There is no excuse for cutting down the supposedly protected native Gary Oaks for sidewalks on Phillips Road just because there was a grant. On the other side, there was, no, there were no Gary Oaks, and I was told the sidewalks can't be put there because the grant ended on the road, which was the end of the census tract. This is unforgivable. On a different topic, I believe that the question of incentives for affordable high-density housing development in the Central Business District is still in the air. The house where I grew up is, is just adjacent to this, and my parents still live there on Ponce de Leon Creek. Although I realize that the area is already zoned for high-density as of 2018, encouraging the development of high-density affordable and low-income housing there is completely inappropriate and would ruin the character of this quiet, quaint neighborhood close to Lake Silicon. We ask that no incentives be given and that this area be allowed to retain its current character. Finally, I would like to also mention that the, our water-
Thank you, Ms. Minetti.
Excuse me?
Thank you, Ms. Minetti.
Oh, thank you very much. Protect our water.
Yeah, thank you.
The next person-
Mr. Dunlop, Mr. Mr. Dunlop, Mr. James Dunlop, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
If you can, Mr. Dunlop, go ahead.
My name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I would certainly like to pick up on some of the points that Christina Manetti made regarding Gary Oaks. And I'm particularly concerned about the lack of documentation about, you know, the state of Gary Oaks within the city. As I understand it, until very recently, you know, when there was sort of no, you know, when there were absolutely no protections for Gary Oaks, I believe. But on small lots now, you do need to get a permit to cut down a Gary Oak. But there's not really a record of what, of how many Gary Oaks are actually in Lakewood. And it seems to me that you regard that as being impossible to get some idea, some inventory of the Gary Oaks in Lakewood and how this is changing over the years. So, you know, this growth management, I believe, as I understand it, the growth, what you're doing, you're thinking about the next 10 years of Lakewood's development. So now what has actually happened to the Gary Oak population in Lakewood, for example, since 1996, when Lakewood became a city? I mean, what percentage of the Gary Oak cover has been lost in Lakewood since 1996? I mean, it'd be really good to know. And what about projections into the future? I mean, I know you're talking about 10 years, but you're talking about with a Gary Oak, a tree that takes, I believe, 150 years to reach maturity, that can last, that can live for 400 years. No, I think you perhaps need to think about going beyond 10 years, thinking about maybe 50 years, 100 years, to get some idea about how the Gary Oak population is going to develop or decline over the next century. 10 years just isn't really a good enough window. And so it really would be a good idea if you were to make some estimates. I understand you do not have records, but I believe there are statistical and historical techniques which would allow you to get some idea of inventory, maybe photographic evidence, maybe Google Maps, just get some idea about what has been happening to the oak population, certainly since 1996, for example. I mean, I understand that things have been, that things have been in a decline for longer from 1996, or a lot of Gary Oaks were cut down with the building of the I-5 in the 1960s. But looking from 1996 onwards and what your projection is for the next 100 years, what do you see? For example, do you see any Gary Oaks left? And I know that you're always going to have Gary Oaks in Fort Stillcom, but in the park, but we're talking about urban forestry as well, about the city and its Gary Oaks. So I think you do need to do some record keeping. And I don't think you should, you should take the city's Gary Oaks for granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Is there anyone that is virtual attending, like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. No one at this time?
I'm not seeing anyone else raise their hand, Mr. Chair.
And I'll go back to those in person. Anyone here would like to make a comment, even though you haven't signed up? No? In that case, we will then close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Thank you. And I thank you all who have made comments. Moving on to unfinished business. Ms. Spear?
So this is the opportunity for the Planning Commission, now that you have closed your public hearing, to begin your own deliberations about whether the package that was provided to you this evening is quote "good to go as is" or if you want to be doing any amendments based on your own recommendations or thoughts or if there's something that you've heard through public comment so far that is engendering some additional discussion among you. One thing to note is that we will provide to you the responses from the city for all of the public comments that have come in in writing, as well as tonight's testimony, since we really didn't have any comments the other two nights. I think we had one or two. But in any case, we have 17 sets of written comments that have been received so far, some from state agencies, some from local agencies, and some from individuals. So we will get all of that to you by your part, your, excuse me. All of your packets will be to you about a week ahead of time before the July 4th holiday.
Okay, Commissioners, comments regarding any portion of the plan? I think Mr. Larson was first. Mr. Combs, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest we bring the issues up so we can just... I would suggest going through each one of them. And then if everyone's good with it, just moving on to the next one so we can get through them quicker. And what do you think, Chair?
To your point, we do have listed... Ms. Spear, we talked about this earlier.
Yes.
Seven, actually, amendments. I think you all saw that online also. So are you familiar with what I'm talking about? There's seven amendments, okay? So the ones that we probably can do something about now, I believe, would be the adopt the 2024 Stillcom-Woodbrook Subarea Plan as an optional amendment for the comprehensive plan. So we'll start with that one. Mr. Combs?
I did have some comments on that. And I will say, and I've been on record saying I don't agree with it because of the geography, the zoning, current zoning, future zoning, they do not all align, and they are not representative of residents. The one person from Woodbrook who did, was a resident who made comments, is not even a resident there anymore and traveled from North Seattle to come down to make their comment. And so it doesn't, it's not representative of the group and the people who were brought in, that, you know, they were solicited to come in to get feedback. So it wasn't a volunteered situation. Now, that being said, I've thought about this and I would challenge Ms. Spear, and maybe she can tell me if I'm wrong. Is there any reason that it would come and bite us later for merging them? Because I was thinking about it, and I don't want there to be an unintended consequence. I don't know that there is a problem with them being adjoined, even though I don't agree that they do align. I don't also see a reason why they have to be separated off. It's a small group. It's, they don't have any representation. So why not lump them in? I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm not exclusionist. I'm more of, okay, is this an opportunity? Is there a real reason? What do we have to benefit or lose? And so I would put that to you, Ms. Spear. Is there something that could, if we do this, resources go there that should be going somewhere else? Or, you know, things are out of whack with priorities? That would be my biggest concern is that it, the, this opens it up and dilutes the attention that is intended for the plan as it's written right now.
Well, we know what the positive side is, the pluses. But what are the disadvantages? I guess that's what Mr. Combs is saying.
Well, first, if I could clarify, just to be making sure I'm responding accurately, what you're, what you're saying, Commissioner Combs, is that you do not agree with the expansion of the current Stillcom subarea boundaries to include Woodbrook?
That's correct.
Okay. Because the 2011 subarea plan was strictly Stillcom north of I-5. And the 2024 version incorporates the Woodbrook neighborhood as well. I will tell you that the reason the city recommended doing that and the reason we tried to engage people from the Woodbrook neighborhood, business owners as well as residents, was because anecdotally, for ever since incorporation, there has been messaging to the city that that is a group that even feels more isolated than Stillcom. They're on the other side of I-5. They feel underrepresented because they are so isolated and because they are so poor. We did hear some of that conversation happen at some of the committee meetings that were held. In terms of other negatives, it's, at this point, for planning, it is what it is. It's zoned, and the current uses in there, I'm not aware of too many non-conforming uses. You do have the recent changes and rezoning of much of what was residential to industrial property, and much of that has been filled with industrial development. There is no hammer coming down from the state or the region to say you have to do this. This is an optional element to begin with. But I would just go back to the recommendation to incorporate that area because of the relationship of that group of people to the city and the partnership that's in the minds of those that live in both Stillcom and Woodbrook. They're different areas, they're across the highway from each other, but they feel like they are down at the bottom of the city and aren't getting much attention. The way the subarea plan is drafted is it includes encouragement to try to get local representation and neighborhood engagement going. It's not just the city needs to do X, Y, and Z. It's trying to promote leadership from that area to help itself. They have a very active and successful group in Springbrook, trying to mirror some of that in Stillcom and Woodbrook.
So, my question is really related to, because I think we're going to disagree on the representation. Because that, that's us going out and asking people, specific people from a group, is different than people volunteering to come in and say, here, I've got some ideas. And I don't think that that was done in all these areas, but it was done in that one. And so that, but I'm trying to understand what are the consequences if we do this? How does it affect the Stillcom side? Because we already have a Stillcom plan. The proposal is to add Woodbrook. That's a proposal. Just because it says it's part of the 24 plan, it's the proposed version of it, right?
Correct.
And so I think, I'm just trying to understand what the negative sides are. I'm, I guess what I'm saying is I'm more inclined to say it's an okay thing to do, but I don't want to do it if it's going to have a negative consequence to the existing plan and the existing neighborhood.
There would be no negative effect. This is an expansion of an area to try to incorporate a part of the city that at this point doesn't have that subarea focus. It doesn't do anything to discount or stop the progress that's been made in Stillcom since the 2011 plan was adopted.
And we just didn't want to have a second plan because too many plans was going to be an obstacle?
Yeah.
Something simple that we have X number of funds available that usually go to Stillcom, now they're going to go to Stillcom and Woodbrook. Does that diminish?
No, because what we're doing is looking at where road projects can happen and what type of grant funding will fund them. That doesn't change whether you're talking about all of the city or a subarea. The way the city does its transportation and infrastructure planning, as you know, the city doesn't own any of its utilities. And in terms of transportation, the funding is really through grant processes.
Mr. Larson?
I think that the opportunities and benefits for joining that together as part of the city of Lakewood's planned inclusive area outweigh the sparseness of the population there. We've got a lot of jobs now there. We have some pretty good employers and some work and distribution. And that is the power, certainly, of that neighborhood. And it's going to get greater and stronger. And so by being inclusive, I think we're enhancing that situation rather than doing anything that would potentially degrade it in the future. So I speak in favor of the inclusion.
Comments from... So is the Commission ready to then vote on that particular amendment?
Sure.
So now, do I need somebody else to do that, Ms. Spear?
It's preferable that you aren't the one that makes the motion, but it's not impossible.
Well, okay, Mr. Combs.
So moved.
Okay, so, all right.
I'll make a motion that we approve it as written.
And then Mr. Larson will second it? So, all those in favor of adopting the 2024 Stillcom-Woodbrook Subarea Plan as an optional element of the comprehensive plan? Please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Let's go to the 2024 amended the 2018 downtown subarea plan to incorporate parcels rezoned in 2023 to the Central Business District.
And I'm, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have a map that I can show you, but maybe I'll do it this way. I'm going to walk over there and point to where we're adding some properties to the southern boundary. It's along the immediate boundary of the subarea plan in the downtown. And it's, if I'm remembering right, it's nine parcels, but I'm just going to walk over there to point since I don't have it electronic.
So right along the bottom of the red, there's about nine parcels. And that is the only change. The rest of the boundaries of the subarea remain the same. The zoning intended to let the residential development, whenever it does redevelop, take advantage of the formate code that is included for the ZAPHOS subarea in 18.
Questions from Commissioners?
Ms. Spear, I was here when this came up before. Do you want to give the background about how, why it came up?
Um, see if I can pull it out of the recesses of my mind. We had, we had at first a discussion about a number of other parcels being rezoned as well because there was a request from a specific person looking to develop some property, multifamily, if I'm remembering correct, Midrise. And then the thought was, rather than just have kind of this dangling bunch of parcels, do an even bottom line, if you will, for the subarea. That ultimately was rejected by council. And so we ended up with fewer parcels being rezoned than the Planning Commission had recommended. However, they are now Zoned CBD or Central Business District. And that is a zone that's only allowed in the downtown subarea, hence the change of the boundary. Is that a fair assessment?
If I remember correctly, that area is across the street from the St. Francis Cabrini Church on Main Street?
Uh, yes, yes, on this side, where City Hall is, yeah.
Okay. And that's terrible?
May I ask, why did council reject the proposal?
The reason the council rejected the additional parcels first recommended by Commission was because, first of all, they received additional information in the SEPA review that was not available to Planning Commission. So there was, the Commission was operating a little bit out of deficit. But also because you have a long-established residential neighborhood there that they did not want to turn into non-conforming uses. So they, because single-family developments or homes, I should say, are not allowed in the CBD. So by bringing this whole line of single-family residences into the subarea plan, they are instantly non-conforming. And with the, what that entails in terms of property values and title complications, et cetera, they decided not to do it. The parcels we're talking about are for, as I said, multifamily, which is something that is allowed in the subarea.
Okay. Ms. Spear?
To be clear, what is currently on those parcels? Is it developed residential, single-family dwellings? Or is it undeveloped land? Or what is there as we...
Forgive me, some of you may know this off the top of your head. At least some of it is undeveloped. But I think there are parcels that are built on, and it's single-family. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
If I remember correctly, there used to be a couple of multifamily there, single, single-story, brick and torn down. But adjacent to it is single-family.
Yeah.
So this is like the kind of track housing, if you will, that's between Francis Cabrini School and here? That's, that's the geographic area we're talking about?
Generally speaking, but the area that would be rezoned or added into the downtown subarea is the stuff closer to the gas station and out to Bridgeport. It's further along the line that way. So it's not the established, I think it's Wilder is the name of the street.
Yeah.
That area would be remaining unaffected.
Okay, so in this map, just looking at it from here, right? It looks like it is not in line with whatever geography is already there, streets that are already laid out. To me, appears that it's unordinary? I don't know. It doesn't just follow the natural line of drift?
It, correct. It does not go just directly out toward Bridgeport. It drops down to the south, and it's kind of, it's all within established road system. It's not like you're, you're bringing in landlocked parcels, but it is a little dip down. And the thought process was because it's multifamily, the thought is that this is an area, the subarea is where we want higher-density housing to come in, that it made sense to do so, and the council agreed.
Mr. Combs?
Could I suggest that we table this one for next time? Could I suggest that we table this one for next time? And then we can have a map, just look at it one more time, maybe get a fresh Google map. And then we all can look at it one more time. It, there, there was a little history and it's hard to, you know, from this map and just discussing it. And I think only two of us were there when it came up last time. So it would probably be good for everyone to see again.
And my apologies for not having that up for you to see.
Okay. I certainly support that. I'd like to walk it. I've not done so, so do that. So agree to, agree to table.
You'll find it. It's, okay. All right, then we'll hold off on that one there. The one we just had a public hearing on the incorporating the Lakewood Shoreline Master Program. How do you feel about that? The one we just had public hearing on? Ms. Spear?
The city would recommend waiting because we have a number of written comments that we would like to respond to and provide you that information.
Good point.
Is this a request for 150 feet instead of 200 feet? Yeah, I'd support the city on it. That gives a consistency to what we're doing. If we need to table it until we read the others written in comments, though, I'm happy to do that.
Let's just do that then. Ms. Talbot?
Can I ask a question about, related to that, though? Just as I was listening to the presentation tonight, it came to my mind. Have, have there been permit requests or permit applications filed along any of the fish bearing or non-fish bearing streams over the last year?
I don't know if either of our relatively new department staff would be able to answer that. I can certainly answer it for you by the 10th of July. Okay.
Mr. Combs?
You know, you know, in, in that plan, and I know we haven't, we're going to have a chance to talk about it more. I figure we might as well get a little bit out of the way. The, I saw on there a stormwater, giant stormwater pond is included and it shows as fish bearing, which are not, they don't go together typically. And so I don't know why we're calling it a fish bearing water body if it's a stormwater pond. And, and so I think those are ones that, I guess if we have a puddle, we don't want to call it a body of water. And so I want to try and make sure we measure out which ones are which. And so we're right sizing our, our recommendation. I'm, I'm for the protection, but in measured approaches, I don't think with all the different sizes and locations, it's a one size fits all. So I would try and find the right metric for each one. And then as there's a priority or a need, putting them up with it rather than saying everything that has water in it, let's, let's address it this way. I know that's a little more out of the box than normal, but I think having worked with stormwater ponds and bodies of water, I, I think it's a, it's, it's too, it's a pretty broad stroke and I, but I like the idea and I like the protection.
Just to clarify, and I may ask either Mr. Remack or Ms. Talbot to come and help me. The map that we're talking about and that I pointed out is before the public hearing is something that came from the Department of Natural Resources. And the typing that you see is based on then coming out in ground truthing. If you're talking Commissioner Combs about Owens Marsh, which is now a stormwater pond, before it was a stormwater pond, it was a wetland, which is why they put the, the pond there. But again, asking for a little bit of help here, calling a neighbor. That, once it's, it's been identified and placed on this DNR map, it's hard to take it back off and it's hard to challenge the finding that they've made.
Hi, Jeff Remack, Director for Planning and Public Works, City of Lakewood. The stream typing is actually done by Department of Natural Resources as well as Ecology. And we do not have authority to alter the stream type once it's been set. So what we pull is actually off of their GIS map so that we can recognize exactly what exists and what's been seen. That's why we see the number of unnamed and the new additions that we've had. So we do have to reflect and respect those as to what we do with it and we don't have an option. There is an ability for a city, if they believe there is a stream that has been untyped, to make a request of the ID team, which really consists usually of your local tribal authorities as well as Department of Ecology, Fish and Wildlife, and then the DNR to come out and do the typing. They'll walk it, take a look at the shoreline, see what the fish habitat, give it a rating as to where it falls out, where it'd be NP, NS, or fish bearing. And then at that point, that is the, that is the decision. So that's where we're at and what we're looking with. So we're working with the factual of what we have to.
Yeah, I think they're, yeah, I appreciate it. They, they have designated what, you know, these, it doesn't make them right. And so I think we can, we can do that because we're local. We know what that stuff is. We know, we can go and look at it. They, they can go look at it and, and call it lots of different things. And I'm, I've seen them do it. And so I'm, I am for the protection, but I, I don't believe that I don't believe it's a fish.
I understand 100% and that always does it make logical sense sometimes when you look at it? Because there's a number of items that go into it, but they are the regulatory authority and they have the determination of what that typing is. We cannot change that.
Agreed. They, they do the typing, but this is, this is, these are recommendations that we're looking at. And so we don't have to accept any of them.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Her.
Along, along that same line, but in a, in a different way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, thank you, Jesse. The, the, the weather changes and the water courses change, specifically Clover Creek, that has gone dry for longer at a time in the last three years than it had in the previous 20. And, and I wonder when the thousand feet per second data came? Because there haven't been and can't be fish in, on a dead creek. It's a water table creek, which means the water table in Lakewood is somewhat receded. And, and yet maintaining a regulation in some manner that doesn't update the necessity for it is something that I would think would be appropriate to incorporate into the guidelines that we're all expected to go by.
Any other comments, sir?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. The only thing that we are currently discussing, just to be clear, right? Is the recommendation of the 200 foot or the 150 foot? That's what's on, being discussed currently or?
Sorry, no. And I, I spent a lot of time on that because I know that's why we had a lot of public here this evening. What we're talking about is a significant rewrite of our Critical Areas Ordinance, which is in Lakewood Municipal Code Title 14.
You were talking about the whole piece, right?
The whole chapter has a lot of changes and they are essentially to reflect best available science. And again, that is something that the city has to comply with. Our Critical Areas Ordinance was last updated before the latest round of best available science became available, so it's out of date. But one of the things that the city is trying to do from the current draft in front of you this evening and what the public was testifying on, where fish bearing streams had a 200 foot buffer. Because there is the fact that the WDFW's recommendation for 200 foot is a recommendation and we are a built out urban area. This is a city with a regional growth center right smack in the middle of it. The position of the city that we are recommending to you is that the 200 foot is excessive. 150 feet gets you to the large majority of what a 200 foot buffer would protect. And the, the reasoning will be further explained in that background report that's coming. But that is the one that we can change. The rest of them, it's that 100 foot or that 200 foot for the other types.
So in essence, we're really talking about this one optional piece.
We're talking about the ability to change that one thing. I think the discussion right now is the entire Critical Area Ordinance.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
I make a motion that we agree with the city and recommend the change to 150 feet from 200 feet.
So any further discussion before we do that?
I thought we were waiting until we got all the responses back.
I believe so.
But.
Yeah, we.
He has the prerogative to make a motion.
We were going to do that.
I'm willing to cut to the chase.
So how many responses? You know, even if we just had one response, I think we owe it to that individual who sent in that response to look at it.
That's fair.
Okay?
And some of the responses are also from state and local agencies that you may want to be aware of as well.
Okay.
I withdraw the motion.
Appreciate you wanting to cut the chase, but.
Just want to get something done here.
We got one done, so. So let me, Mr. Larson, you also at one time indicated that you wanted to add maybe something to the Station District Subarea Plan?
Yes, that's correct. Would you like me to speak to that?
Please, at this time?
I've made the suggestion and, and request and responsible Spears request. I only late this afternoon got it out in, in a verbal form. I apologize for not giving everybody more notice about that. The, the subarea plan for the station, I've recommended that we add, oh, bless your heart. The only thing is, I didn't walk in with my reading glasses and I can't see it. But I know, but I know what I wrote. And the subarea plan for, for the station to include the Springbrook area. Because Springbrook is a logical place for housing and activity to support that housing, A, which is already demonstrating. And with the new construction that's there and then the new density and the remake and the rebuild that's clearly on the way for Springbrook is a similar thing is happening in the Station District. And we're about to see substantial changes next to the station on the north side of it with some pretty substantial development there. And, and likewise, more properties are going to be coming to the fore in the Springbrook area. And they, they actually share quite a number of similarities. And, and, and Springbrook is yet, from the city's standpoint, is on the other side of the freeway. And I think we need to embrace it and this is a very good way to do it. Because if we plan it to work together, even though it's got Bridgeport Way and two bridges, one on either end of it for, for access points, it still has an ability to be synergistic with the city. And so creating a zone that does that and works to enhance residential supported commerce as well as some regional commerce that's oriented the freeway as, and then residential development to make that whole part of the city better. Seems to me to make a lot of sense to do that comprehensively. So one of the things that I've done is, in, in my thought, is to describe that area as including Ponder's Corner. We don't call it Connor Corner anymore, but it's the Ponder's. And, and then on up the freeway to Highway 512 and include that whole business area that is there. It goes over and then back down to 108. And 108, it would be the northerly boundary of this area. And so, and, and I've described that line by line in my, in my letter. So for, so that's the idea, to have that whole, whole area be revitalized in, in a comprehensive way. And right now we're limited to, within the subarea plan of the station to be only on the north side of Interstate 5. So that's the perspective was, was I suggest that.
Do you see the challenges and, and advantages similar to the Tillicum-Woodbrook?
No, I think it's a different aspect, a different function entirely from the Tillicum perspective. Where we are going to see a bunch of work that is the city is going to have to do is compatibility of uses. Because we've got some industrial uses, could, we are going to have apartment complexes next to them. And that's now already demonstrated at Springbrook with the new industrial building that goes this here amidst three different apartment complexes. But there's the, the liver and kidney operation there and the opportunity for more commercial. So we will have to see how you maintain quiet shade from big buildings onto residential, you know, some, some things for compatibility between uses that, that we're all asking to be part of the same picture. That's going to be a reasonably complicated matter to do. I, I recognize that.
Ms. Talbot?
I'll comment. I'd be interested to, I mean, I would, I would engage in exploring the option, but only through, I think, some additional series of maps. Because as I see it, if I'm under, if I am familiar with the maps enough, but forgive me if I'm offshooting it here. The Station District is the red triangle. If I'm looking at the Station District Tillicum Subarea Map in the middle, I'm looking at.
It's a very good point. It should be illustrated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the Station District as the red triangle north of I-5. And then the Springbrook area is just kind of that triangular area south of I-5, right? So merging those two together is an entirely large subarea that would be quite larger than the Central Business District itself. So that's something to consider. And because the level of investment needed to achieve the goals for such a subarea that big, you know, how much are we drawing resources to and what are those resources? I do, I do think, and I, I think what you were saying and what I agree with is, is that the Springbrook area and the, the investments, the infrastructure investments in that area definitely is still, I think, a need. I mean, when I have driven and been back there, the sidewalks, especially on the Collector Local Streets, San Francisco, Chicago, I guess those kind of north, south, smaller streets, they lack sidewalks entirely. And in the winter, it's pretty shaded. The ice doesn't thaw back there when those streets ice up. And so you're asking families, women and kids with strollers to get their kids to the bus on icy streets with no sidewalk. And so the whole infrastructure back there just needs attention. And so that's where I would definitely support some investment in. But I think that could also be done by the existing Springbook plan and maybe some stronger implementation policies and that sort. So that's what I, that's what I'm thinking. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, but that's my reaction to it.
Indeed, that's one of the similarities of both sides is that there's a substantial lack of of residential infrastructure in both places that needs to be proper.
Mr. Combs?
And that's a good, good point as well, knowing that our housing is a high priority. You know, the emphasis we're putting on these, I think, would, I think, would support that even though it's larger than the Central Business District. The amount of housing that you can get in those bigger areas isn't anything as close to what you could get in the CBD just because of the zoning capacity. But I, I agree with the, I agree with the idea. I also am with Ms. Talbot. I think that we just need to explore, have a map of what the proposed new area looks like and, and what, what we hope to have accomplished with that. You know, I think that it's, I, I agree with the, I agree with what you described. And I think, I don't know that we'll get it done by, you know, next month.
It's a big job. It'll be something that will be accomplished in the next comprehensive plan cycle, if you will. You know, it's, it's, it's a reasonably elaborate idea that needs to be carefully considered. You bet.
So basically you're just planting the seeds, shall we say, for something that we need to maybe discuss in the future?
What if we can, what if we put a recommend, or put a consider this option in the comp plan? So that as this comes up, there's something in the plan that says, let's explore this idea and it's something we can move with rather than. And it's something we can move with rather than wait.
That's the very idea.
Mr. Chair?
Very idea.
Clarifying question. What is the difference between the current development plan for, for that area and making it a sub area? What is, what do we change by making it, it's a standalone sub area plan versus just a neighborhood development plan?
Yeah. If I could, and forgive me, this is going to be long and rambling, but I'm going to try to respond to everything I heard. First of all, in the city comprehensive plan, there is a policy saying that Springbrook needs its own sub area plan. It hasn't happened yet, but it's there as something that the city has identified as a need. Secondly, the zoning that you see in Springbrook right now, the industrial zoning that was done was very recent, within the last two or three years. And it was done by the city council because of flooding issues. And the thought was, let's have industrial development in there rather than residential to minimize property and, and damage and also risk of health and safety. So there was a reason why it looks right now what it looks like in terms of zoning. Third, I, what I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing from Mr. Larson as well as some others is that there may be things that can be done even before a separate sub area plan were to be adopted. Or this consideration through a finding of fact right now to take to the council about adding it to the Station District one. Is, are you talking about code changes similar to the form based code that you see right now in Station District or downtown being applied into that area? Because that's different from adopting a sub area plan. Maybe you're talking about making sure that infrastructure is prioritized. There are sidewalk improvement plans. There is the Station District Access Improvement, $44 million worth of projects that Sound Transit is working with the city to build within the next few years to include the 47th Street Bridge, to include sidewalks, to include other road improvements. So having said all of that, I think the city would also say, this is by no means ready to pick up now. And if you were to provide a finding of fact recommending something happened with the sub area, the existing sub area plan to the north, or to go ahead with that policy that says create its own sub area. That is a multi-year expensive project process. And if it were to happen the same way that downtown and Station District did, it requires a CEPA planned action ordinance as well as the code being changed to be appropriate for that part of the city. So it would be a multi-year process. Not to say that's not to do, but I'm, I'm just trying to be realistic with your timeframe to expect. But what I can say is that coming back to you for the tent, we can certainly provide you with what is already intended to happen there with infrastructure improvements. What's going on with, again, a little bit more information about the flood risk for that part of the city? And why the zoning was changed recently by council to industrial?
Certainly, certainly those things are, are all component parts. The, the vision is to have this part of the city look and behave together in, in a synergistic way. To have the transportation aspect be something that everybody can take advantage of. Resident who's a resident in the area for access to their jobs and more efficient way. For to have the goods and services available to them as residents and to have access to the, to the transportation infrastructure for business and industry as well in a comprehensive way. You know, this whole aspect of it fronting on Interstate 5 also gives a tremendous opportunity for possession or present, presentation of the City of Lakewood in a, in a dynamic and, and exciting municipal way. And so there are just are a number of those oversight values that were part of the vision. How, what we call it in terms of a working plan or a sub area plan or to fit into all the different definitions. I obviously did not take any of that into consideration, but was looking at it from more, a more global view as to what this could be in years ahead. And, and I didn't have any idea that it would be, be happening immediately. Because this is a pretty major thought process and it takes, it's going to take a lot of thinking to do it right. And that's going to take some time, just going to take some time, so.
And to be somewhat crass, it will take money, which we do not have at the moment.
You bet, you bet.
So to Mr. Combs' comment, is it appropriate then just to recommend to the council that they look at Springbrook as either, either being part of the station sub area plan or have their own? Is that what you're saying?
I, I would say explore the, explore the idea of Springbrook being merged with that sub area plan or expanded all or in part. So that just gives us a lot of flexibility to look at what it needs and then try and right, right size it.
And maybe just reference the existing policy that's in the comprehensive plan that says Springbrook is an area that needs to have sub area planning conducted.
How did the other members feel about that?
Yes, and I would also agree with looking at Springbrook as an individual sub area.
Individual sub area. So we have the two options there. Are you with that?
Yes, that, that fits.
Dr. Wall?
I guess my only concern is, I like the idea that we're paying attention to it and we're planning it. But I really want to make sure that we keep in mind the residents that live there. They need resources there and I feel like they don't have what they need now to be successful. And so I think that has to be a priority. And I'm concerned, I like the idea of having industry, you need industry because that provides living wage jobs. And we need those in, in Lakewood. But I don't want to do it at the expense of people who are of more humble means, who need sidewalks and need access to easy transportation that can take them to those jobs. And so I, I'm cautiously supportive of if it includes those elements because these are the people that are the most vulnerable and I think we really have to pay attention to that.
Totally agree.
Thank you very much for your comments, Spears. We know how to go with that. Okay? Now let me ask.
Thank you, everybody for not, thank you, everybody for not throwing me out with the idea.
Not, not yet, not tonight, not tonight. Is there any other amendment that the commissioners would like to discuss? We're talking about adopting the City of Lakewood Comprehensive Plan. We're talking about the adopt amendments to the Lakewood Municipal Code. Adopt amendments to Title 18. Mr. Larson?
Yes, I have one, one other change that I've suggested in that same letter. And that addresses the land between South Tacoma Way and railroad tracks and north of Stillicum Boulevard and south of 80th Street. Along Durango, if you would, on the, on the west side. That area has two zones. It's divided right in the middle of the land. That goes from South Tacoma Way to Durango Street. And as such, and, and they have different land uses. And it's old because it was originally perceived that the, all the access was going to be commercial and from South Tacoma Way. But with the changes in land use path, well, not necessarily land use patterns, but in, in market demand. Parcels now are larger and more efficient than the individual small parcels that have always faced South Tacoma Way. So in order to take advantage of the ability to remove some of the older buildings and provide access to the interior, which is largely undeveloped because it was cut off with its access as a temporary in time uses that accessed only the frontage. And, and it goes back to when South Tacoma Way was Highway 99 going, you know, the length of the, of the country. And, and so to be able to have an internal commerce center or an internal manufacturing plant or any of those things that would use that available land. A good, available, buildable, accessible land. Were prohibited from doing that simply because we put two zones in there. And so I, I have suggested that we make a recommendation under the comprehensive plan to the, to the City of Lakewood, the city council, that we create a zone that incorporates both of the uses of those zones and, and allows comprehensive development in some way of larger parcels in that district. And so that's a suggestion that I'm asking support for just because it just seems to me, to make common market sense.
What, what are the two zones?
It's come ahead.
I think there's C1 and N1, if I'm not mistaken.
If you look at the map on your screen, am I in the right spot up here with Durango?
You are. C2 and.
Is this I-1 you're talking about?
And I-1, yes.
The only question that immediately comes to mind is this is BNSF property, Burlington Northern. I don't know how much of this up here is all owned by the railroad. But the idea of combining the zone does not mean that the railroad is going to let people use that property, sell that property, et cetera.
Oh, no, it, my, my thought to make the land usable did not include any changes to the railroad's operation. And you can see the curved, curved line that begins at the bottom on the easterly side of it and goes up and, and then jogs out. But if you look at this continuation of the line that is the, the line of the railroad. What I'm talking about goes over to the railroad owned property and only that far. So it doesn't, and we're not going to change anything the railroad does. We're not even going to think about that. And so we get to 80th Street and south. And so it's, you can see how the, what I'm talking about in terms of the different zones there, there, there. That we've got, and I zoomed in on me. So there's some nice big rectangular zones, the Old Nellie's Warehouse and Distribution Facility that was there and is now a multiple use warehouse distribution facility owned by the same fellow that owns a, a big one in Tillicum. And so that's my suggestion is we clean that up, make it work better, make it work comprehensively from a zoning and planning standpoint. And I think we're going to see jobs and, and development in that area. And I don't think we're going to see it until we do something like that.
Dr. Wallace, excuse me.
Dr. Wallace first.
Yeah, I just had a question. I would be cautiously supportive of that, but I'm trying to imagine if we could get some living wage jobs in there of industry for our employees, then I would be very supportive of it. But industry of, you know, making fishing boats, something where we make something that people could make a living wage. That's something that we're lacking in Lakewood and it would seem to me that would fit in a place like that. So if we did that, then that provides jobs, then we're adding housing in other places. Then I think we're, we're doing our duty to the population here.
I'm totally there.
But I wouldn't want, I definitely don't want to impact the railroad because that's very important. So I, I would be cautiously optimistic, but I think we need to do something. We're not going to get a business to come in there, otherwise we're going to have to offer some incentives, I guess is what I'm saying, to get some of those employers. I don't know if that's possible, but I, I would, I would favor it then.
Ms. Talbot?
No, I think I, I just was looking for clarification. So it sounds like you're suggesting that the gray area east of Durango, that that strip you'd like to see rezone to C2? Is that right on the, on the map where Spears is pointing?
I.
Is that the section you're talking about?
Yes, yes. So that is, it's a good demonstration of living wage jobs now in the moving and storage and, and operation that he's got there. And, and we've got then, but see, that use could go over into the C2 area as another jobs generating use. It's not allowed under C2 because that's a commercial type zoning.
So you're proposing moving the I-1 zone further east, not moving the C2 zone further west?
That's correct. But, but you also, there could be a larger set of commercial uses, uses that go even into the IL. And so you've got two different zones, you've got more work to do all the way to get anything done. And so it seems to me to have the entire area on one comprehensive zone makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Combs?
I, I like the idea. It's unclear. It, it seems like we, it seems like we've got a good idea. We need to like bake it a little bit. And it, it would be helpful to get a map of exactly that area. I see what you're talking about, but just draw it here and then show what that looks like. And if it's industrial one, C2, and we're looking for double overlay, what does that look like and what area specifically are you recommending? Because I, I think the idea makes sense. Then we got to look at, and Ms. Spear is going to scratch your head saying, oh, how am I going to know this? But what conflicting uses were right next to each other? And then if we do create a zoning for that or merge them together, what do we exclude so that we don't have two things conflicting right next to each other? Where you got a rendering plant right next to a, you know, apartment building or something like that?
I'm totally there. The, the idea was intended to be a, a global thought that we got into this cycle of comprehensive plan so that eventually thought through, well thought through change could occur.
Yeah, I, I like the idea, but maybe let's put it into a, a bake format where we can start looking at what that, what that would look like.
I would recommend as well, then if the commission wants to pursue this. Again, this is a finding of fact that would go with your package to say incorporate this as a 2025 comprehensive plan amendment to consider. The call for those amendments for next year actually starts next Monday, runs through the month of July. So this is very timely if that's the route you want to go. But this is property where people have no idea what you're talking about tonight. They need notice, they need the opportunity to react.
Yep.
We need to do the, all the environmental analysis and make sure that all of, all of those I's are dotted, T's are crossed, et cetera. So this would not happen this year. This would maybe be incorporated into 25.
I would certainly agree with that guidance. Absolutely.
Good, just food for thought. Time to receive Ms. Talbot.
I just had one question for Ms. Spear and that is if, if the city ever, or I guess, would it be possible to, so like the city in terms of revenues collected in terms of like BNO or real estate excise tax? Or even sales tax? Is it advantageous for the city to look at that buys, to break those numbers down by zone? And notice any trend, if any, in, notice any trend, if any, by zone? Or is that just too minutia of an exercise, of an exercise to get any value from?
You mean by land use zone? Is that what you mean?
Break down like those, those revenues by, by industrial and commercial zone?
I don't know if that's already available easily or not. I can certainly ask our finance department. They do provide regular updates to the council and the public about how those revenues are, are coming in. And I can provide you with the most recent one. I just don't know if it'll have that type of information.
Because I just wonder, it would be interesting maybe at some point to dial in maybe a little bit, maybe if it's like a one and five year period or a one and three year period to get a sense of, you know, what is the value? It's one thing to see these revenues as a, as a lump sum, but we do have, you know, Lakewood does have a manufacturing base. And a business, and a business park base. It would be interesting to see what the trend is revenue wise over a period of time, especially like before and after COVID.
Sure. I'll see what I can find for you.
Mr. Combs?
Eco Northwest or is it Econ West or whatever, Morgan? I, I bet you he's got that already.
Yep.
Any other comments from the commissioners regarding any parts of the comprehensive plan? Talbot?
We didn't get to talk about street parking yet and that is one of the topics before us. And I didn't, I, I wasn't, you know, not, not sure when to. And I didn't, I wasn't, you know, not not sure when to approach into that topic. So I guess I would only kind of open it up and just throw in my very quick reaction from the changes that I've seen in the or the proposals that I've seen in the update. And that is the only, the only thing I just wanted to add on that is that whatever we do decide or whatever we decide to recommend about street parking that we think about, the way in which restricting street parking or allowing street parking interacts with the non-motorized network, the existing and the future non-motorized network. Because what happens on these, especially where you have streets where bicyclists share the road? And if you don't have, yeah, I guess without a an established cross-section street standard for that type of infrastructure, for bike infrastructure, you have conflicts with street parking and cyclists and peds. So I just wanted to put that out there, that that's a, that's one of the things that I'm looking at when we talk about street parking. And just wanted to make that comment.
And if I could react to that, Mr. Chair, the council at this point has had a study session similar to what you did. I can't remember how long ago now, but talking about, maybe it was a little bit of Chicken Little for 2024. However, we do know over time with the changes, there is going to be a densification in the single family areas. And as it stands now, the current road infrastructure, especially in those older neighborhoods, would not support on-street parking because of their width, as well as their condition, as well as their lack of anything other than the travelway for an automobile. So if the if the planning commission felt they wanted to get into details, you certainly can. But it could also be a recommendation along the lines of city council, you need to consider your prioritization of the types of infrastructure that you fund, where in the city you focus your efforts first. And take a look at what your current transportation planning priorities are and whether they need to change in part to reflect some of these concerns. It can be that level if you want it to be, or it could be more detailed, so it's up to you.
Piggyback on on that, an area we didn't talk about in detail. But there are a number of issues that the council wanted us to look at and make recommendations on, specific ones. And if I recall, another one was consider adding ADUs to the station district. I think I read that someplace also.
There was a comment, and forgive me for not remembering where this came from, which meeting, about looking at the addition, the allowance of accessory dwelling units in the Lakewood Station District area where mid-density is already proposed. Because under the new state rules, duplexes and a certain number of the other middle housing types can have ADUs under state law. So if you wanted to throw that into the code, we can do that and have that go to the council as a recommendation should you want to.
Oh, I I thought that that was a a an ask from the council, so you say it's.
I'll have to go back and verify, I know what you're talking about, it's in my brain too, I just can't remember right now.
Well, along that line, what other asks?
The third one would have been regarding the transportation mitigation fee for downtown and whether it needs to change, go away, stay the same. And again, it doesn't have to be details, it's just what do you see after looking and talking about the performance of that program to date? If you remember, it's only about a tenth of what it could have been collected to date because of the way the administrative policy is written that says, A, you get credit for past uses and B, there's no limit how far back those uses are calculated from. And so if that is something that the planning commission wants to approach again at higher or more detail, that that is just something they want to hear something about.
So I guess it would be good for us to know what areas we need to put a little more emphasis on for our next meeting, so we ensure that those areas are covered and they get our inputs.
Absolutely.
In addition to the rest. Any other comments about Mr. Lars?
I have two, two questions. The first one, a little bit humorous, but maybe on the point, point. And that is, does the ADU requirement or law by the state of Washington require vehicular access?
It requires the ability to build more accessory dwelling units than you can now on a particular lot. It requires that you allow more types of lots to have them, and it actually limits the city's ability in some areas to require parking. So you may end, or you will end up within that quarter mile of a major transit stop of a, the ability to require onsite or on-street parking in some instances will not be in code. The city cannot allow it, I mean, I'm sorry, cannot require it.
Well, my question is, is does the law the state of Washington gave us to deal with require, include the necessity to have vehicular parking? Otherwise, we could make it bicycle access only.
If you want to, you certainly can require that, sir.
Problem solved. Seriously, the my other point is that earlier we passed five to two. And I since would change my vote at least, a rule that took advantage of an economic zone for construction incentives.
You're talking about the residential target area in the downtown?
Yes.
That will be coming back to you as a separate topic in September.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Combs?
I, trust me, I do want to get out of here, but I I was like, we already opened Pandora's box. On the parking, I I looked up, there's, so the the state has, Commerce Department puts out something and they work with the MRC.
MRC?
Yeah. And they come up with recommendations on how to address this new law that is passed for cities. And many cities, the bigger ones, said, you know what? We're not gonna deal with the parking, it'll be what it'll be. And that's what you said earlier. And although initially that was not my thought after seeing other people adopt it or approach it that way, there is a part of me that wonders if, you know, addressing it as we see the need. I do think that we're stuck with it either way, so we don't, we don't, we can't change that law. What we can do is customize the the problem as we see it come up. Okay, now we see the areas that are really impacted because nothing is going to be impacted immediately. You have to wait for these to get built. And so we do have a little bit of a runway. So that's that's one comment, I'm not trying to pitch one way or the other, but that was something that I did notice. The other one is the short-term rental. And I think that there's only the really small cities are saying, don't do that. Because everyone knows it's hard, it's expensive to get housing. If there's any way we can get it, let's get it. And that there also isn't a mass problem in our city with Airbnb or I don't know what the other ones are, but what, there isn't a short-term crisis going on in our area. So we would be trying to proactively solve a problem that we don't actually have today. And so that would be another one, I would say, like, I I'm more for getting the housing in and then addressing that issue a little bit later. Yeah, I don't think that I'm, I would have passed the bill that was passed, the House bill that put us in this situation, but now that it's here, that would be how I would probably approach it. So, sorry, Chair, that's all I got today.
Thank you, anyone else? Any comments? So let's close out the unfinished business portion.
All right.
And let's go to the new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, we continue on an odd schedule for you in June and July. So tonight was a special date, thank you for making it. The next meeting, because of the July 4th holiday, is actually on July 10th, it's not on July 3rd. So in a couple of weeks, you'll be back on a special date. That would be at this point, the night that you would take action on this package. If you need more time, you need to say so, and that's perfectly within your right. And then assuming you were to take action, then we would have hiatus, you go away, you don't come back till September. And then there will be a number of other topics coming in front of you, including the multifamily tax exemption residential target area changes, including the Shoreline Master Program, locally initiated changes I mentioned, including potentially some other development regulations for critical areas and perhaps a few others as well. The the difficulty we're trying to navigate is that the city council is about to start its consideration once this 24 package is done, the next biennial budget. And so that schedule is dictating the speed at which we're having to do all of these other things. So hence the weird schedule for you in May and June. Thank you again for accommodating, and we'll see how the fall goes, just depending on their their schedule.
In the event we find that our July 10th meeting, we still have questions, we still need to comment and discuss amongst ourselves. The next meeting would be then, what, the 17th?
If you wanted to have another meeting in July, then your regularly scheduled meeting would be on the 17th. So if you went the 10th and then the 17th, that is possible if you feel the need.
Thousand pages, 1,049 pages. Well, let's, let's see what happens on the 10th. We do have our homework, you're gonna send us homework?
Yes, and I will send you things as soon as I possibly can. There's obviously some of the requests, plus the reaction to public comment that we'll need to be preparing, but we will get that to you as soon as possible.
Okay, anything else on the new business?
No, Mr. Chair.
Our next steps, Mr. Bokey? Nothing this evening, okay? Again, the next meeting is the 10th, anything else for the good of the order?
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July, it's a record is eight 10, I mean, 8:30, we have not been here that long before. But congratulations for setting the record. Okay, if there's nothing else? Meeting adjourned, thank you all.